I'd like to call to order this, what's today, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Manchester Shortsville Central School District Board of Education. Everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
So, wow, thank you, thank you, we're so glad to have all you guys here. Looking forward to acknowledging some of the folks in the room in just a few minutes, we've got a few quick items to get through. Before we do that, we're just gonna do our approval of prior meeting minutes, check for public comment, and then we'll celebrate some, um, some personnel. So, alright, um, so this is the minutes for the March twentieth regular board meeting. Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the March twentieth, twenty twenty five regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. Motion from Matt, seconded by me, all in favor, oh, sorry. Sorry, I was very busy. Anyone have any questions on that? Here you go, I quote, all in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries, very good. And then the, sorry, I gotta get back into groove here, my voice is a little bit hoarse too, I was not feeling well a couple of days ago, I think I'm coming through this, so. Just gonna push through here. Alright, so the April tenth work session, Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the April tenth, twenty twenty five Board of Education work session minutes as presented. Motion from Matt, seconded by Jen, questions, all in favor, aye, opposed, no, motion carries, very good. Do you know? I mean, they're welcome to. Good job.
They just want some pop rocks.
Do they have to speak to get the pop rocks or? Okay, um, I need that, okay, so Dana Hadley. Yes, ma'am, alright, how are you?
Good, how are you, thank you. One of the most I appreciate very much the opportunities to address. My son cannot be here tonight, he had to work, so I wanted to just mention on his behalf, um, so two things I wanted to just mention, one is the Klay Target and one is the homeschool extracurricular. So on his behalf, I just wanted to mention how important it was for him to be able to remain on the Klay Target team. I had, um, one I also just mentioned to the board as far as the Klay Target team itself being an independent organization, I guess it's on insurance. It's, it's independent of the school itself, um, it's inclusive, I mean, the design of the, um, team of, of the league is to be inclusive, um, it's co-ed, it's not based on tryouts. And they do allow for home instructed students as well, yes, folks, students that all be together on the teams. Um, it's also been an amazing experience for the kids, we've been at it since it started, um, with the Red Jacket, um, the coaches are amazing, um, it's, it's just, it's a great atmosphere. They're amazing for kids and watching them grow together and responsibility, respect for each other. Just wanted to mention that. As far as the homeschool extracurricular, I understand there's a lot of assets to it, um, I just wanna mention a perspective that I feel is important. With the extracurricular to, to allow the kids, um, to participate, I think benefits the community, um, we know it's part of the missions, working partnership with the community, and I feel that's amazing, right? There's homeschool families that choose at various times to homeschool and be enrolled in public school, we have also been part of that. To me, it's always been a welcoming atmosphere, whether we've been home instructed or public school. I think it's a great transition, also, um, for somebody who's been home instructed and is going to be at public school that they've already been in connection with, with the kids. And what I've seen has been a great experience again for these kids all being working together. So just wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Like the benefits of the community is pretty amazing, so.
Well, I know you've addressed this in the past and worked with Superintendent Barnard and on some of the things that you're, um, just interested in advocating for, I appreciate that. And honestly, thanks for taking the time to come talk to us today. You have some, you have some things under discussion, I think you're relevant later in the meeting, so.
Right, well, I, again, I appreciate, and I looked also at if, even if there wasn't a policy that was working on to, um, extend the extracurricular, um, to homeschoolers, if there's a way to at least allow the team, the Klay Target team to stay together since, um, they've been gathered for so long. So if there's a way to, to blend that since it's independent, something I, I'm just asking if that's, that you guys could consider.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Alright, you guys, we're gonna move on, and, um, at this time, we do have a resolution for some personnel, um, events for the district. And before we do that, uh, once we do, we're gonna do, just take a short minute to celebrate some of our staff members who are, um, who've achieved some important milestones in their careers. So, if it's okay with you guys, I'm gonna just mention a few names, if you wanna maybe raise your hand or something if you're here, if you're comfortable doing so. Uh, we've got, uh, five staff members here tonight, uh, they're part of a group that are, that have achieved tenure this year. And, um, you know, it's really obviously important milestone, and we appreciate, uh, your service to the district and, uh, wanna be here to celebrate that as well. So, Jamie Pendleton, awesome, thank you very much, Dale Carrigan, thank you. Uh, Leah Staninger, hey, alright. Juliana Pichapalo, there she is, alright, and Jody Roberts, awesome, so thank you guys very much. We're gonna go ahead and do our, um, personnel vote, and then we'll take a quick break. Feel free to grab, um, cookies and a drink and hang out for a minute, as long or short as you care to. We appreciate, uh, the opportunity to congratulate you all, and then, um, for those who care to, um, uh, if you wanted to part after that part of the meeting, please feel free to, because, uh, it doesn't get any more interesting from here, I can tell. I'm sorry, I mean, I. I guess the present day, alright, never know what Matt's gonna say, so yeah. Uh, alright, very good, so. Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and pursuant to education law approves the consent agenda items as presented. The attached personnel list, so another motion from Scott, and seconded by Amy, all in favor, aye, opposed, no, motion carries. Alright, great job, congratulations. It'll take about five minutes, everyone, it'll take a great, everyone, it'll take some time to do that, and we appreciate those who joined us. Alright. Okay, you wanna go?
Yeah, so I'd just like to introduce to the board and everybody here tonight, uh, one of our partners at RJDC, I wouldn't steal his thunder, but Chris Singer, um, and Chris is the new principal. Um, at RJDC was the assistant principal for years, and he asked to come tonight just to kind of introduce himself to the board, so welcome Chris.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me. Um, members of the board, Superintendent Barnard, Red Jacket staff, all of our here, again, thanks for having me. First, congratulations to everyone who got tenure tonight, that's an awesome accomplishment. Uh, my name's Chris Singer, I've had the privilege of working for Red Jacket Education Center since two thousand eight, first as a school psychologist, then as assistant principal, and now stepping into the role of principal of the Red Jacket Education Center. Um, it's a privilege to be here today formally to introduce myself, and I wanna start with thanking you, thanking you for being a great partner, thanking you for hosting us, um, and the continued collaboration between our programs. Strength of this has really helped support our students and their needs. I know, uh, the population that we work with isn't always the easiest population, but you guys have always been welcoming, always supportive, always willing to partner with us, always willing to problem solve. Um, open lines of communication are there, and that is what we feel on our side needs to help us be successful. So thank you for that, welcoming us into your hallways, sharing the facilities, um, and I just look forward to growing together and continuing this partnership, so thank you very much.
Awesome, well, congratulations on the, the role, um, thanks for taking the time to come and introduce yourself, we appreciate that. And, uh, you know, I, I hope, I know my few years on the board here that the district really values the, you know, the relationship we have with you guys, so, any, anything else to ask?
Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Okay.
Can you feel excuse me, I did take my son to baseball game. This one, this one.
Yeah, that's true. Alright. At this point, I guess, uh, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Randy and Michaela for our student vote, are you guys ready to go? Alright, call it as yours.
Alright, um, good evening, I would like to start off by, um, acknowledging the improvement of our suggestion box from the last meeting. Um, last month, as you guys know, we received around forty, um, suggestions, and that was only from the middle school. This month, we received around a hundred and fifty from, well, the middle and high school, um, so that's together. And with that, as we were hoping for more responses, I took it upon myself to create these little slips of paper, um, specifically made for the suggestion box, to make it easier for students to put their opinions inside the box. Um, additionally, Randy and I, we went to every single social studies class between grades nine and eleven, um, and we talked about us and what we do, um, for you guys and our positions. And, um, also, along with that, we also discussed the purpose of the suggestion box as well, because majority of the kids actually had no idea that it was in the classroom, so we got stuff about that. Um, next, I am going to discuss the new student board representatives for twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six. Um, this past year, there were only four applicants when Randy and I were chosen, and now this upcoming year, we have eighteen applicants. Um, for the upcoming school year.
Civic engagement.
Yes, um, the interviews will be a full day, and that will include both Randy and myself, um, Mr. George, and also two staff members. Um, our goal is to have the new board members observe the June meeting, um, just to see what it's like, you know, get a little feel. Um, and they will be voted in the July meeting. Um, lastly, I would like to address one of the topics that we observed in the suggestion box, so you sent it on the rest. Um, many students wanted to see if we could change the, um, teachers' meeting times so that they can be available during the high period. Um, Mr. George, Mr. Barnard, Randy and I, we, um, discussed why students may want this, um, and what's drawn them towards this suggestion. Um, I made a suggestion to lessen the amount of teacher meetings during the week of the end of the five and the end of the ten marking period. This will benefit students by giving them a chance to get their missing assignments in, um, before the marking period ends, or to maybe fix some assignments that they didn't really like the grade on, so that they can come in. Um, students may also want this because a lot of students don't have study halls during the day, just 'cause their schedules don't really allow that. And also a lot of the students that did suggest, um, night period meetings with their teachers were AP students. So a lot of them are taking a lot of AP classes, and me and Randy, we are AP students, and both of us don't really have a lot of study halls, so we really understand. Um, and just to hit on that, Mr. George and the building council will discuss that next year to figure out the plan for it.
Are you moving on from the suggestion box, or you do have things in the back?
I have, so we, we got about five big trends in the suggestion box, um, so I've got, so, hi, I hope you're all doing well.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, over the past few months, we have been paying close attention to the traffic, and, um, I'm happy to share that we have put three visitor parking spots in front of each, um, the high school, middle school, and elementary school. Um, these will make it a lot easier for visitors to access the school and district offices without needing to park in the bus loop, which would, uh, which in turn helps keep people from competing in traffic. So another one of those important trends that we saw, uh, in the suggestion box was about student transportation, especially during, um, bad weather, the winter, that sort of area. Um, as you know, most high school students don't qualify for the bus service unless they are out, like, out a mile or further away. And, um, that, something they brought up was that it's difficult during the winter months, when it gets really windy, when it gets really, um, snow filled all around. And a lot of them don't have parents who can drive them to school because they're already gone by the time that the students are ready to go. Um, so we've talked about a few things, uh, suggestions coming from, maybe they could have their own separate, um, busing, any other way like that, um, but that's something that we're going to explore, whether or not that's plausible. Um, another big point was the food in the cat period, um, both in terms of the quantity and quality of it. Uh, we saw a lot of them because of portion sizes, because they have seem, been seemingly getting smaller in the past, um, year, but also within the past month and a half. So, and students are saying that they're still hungry after this lunch isn't enough, the portions aren't enough for them. So, Mr. George has already spoken to the student council about this, um, and some changes were made, um, to the actual, uh, food choices, so that's helping with the quality. And, uh, Michaela and I are planning to meet with the director of food services in the upcoming future to talk to them about that as well. And lastly, I wanted to touch on, uh, something that's come up time and time again about our school facilities, um, mostly the bathrooms in the sports field. Um, so at recent, at the recent student council meeting, the students had raised multiple concerns about the things to Mr. George. Uh, this included some broken locks on stalls, as well as low water pressure or high water pressure, depending on what bathroom you're in, and an unpleasant odor coming from some of the voiding closets. Uh, maintenance press has already been put in for the locks, and, um, the ins, we're hoping the new installation of the water pump at the new capital project will also help with the water pressure. Uh, beyond the bathrooms, we also heard a lot of feedback about our athletic fields, especially the baseball and softball fields. Uh, students noted that the fields are only maintained right before the season starts, so it gets very difficult for the maintenance team to catch up by the time they're coming out to do the fields. And, um, it gets very flooded even after just a small rainfall. So, several suggestions were brought forward, and, um, there was some stuff dealing with the football field, installing a turf. There wasn't much on how to exactly help the baseball or softball field, but we're looking into that as well. And, um, there was another idea that was officially renaming the sports complex in the back, the Bob Good Sports Complex, in honor of what he's done for our community and sports. Uh, and finally, uh, there was also suggestion brought up about a possible, um, space for wrestling, practice, and matches. It's an idea that has come up a lot, and we are looking into it, um, currently. So these are just some of the suggestions that the students brought up, and it really shows how invested they are in helping and re, um, making some changes at school.
Excellent, excellent.
I do have questions.
Yeah.
Eighteen students, like, for next year, that, that's fantastic, and bring, um, just brings to my mind, like, can there be some type of advisory to the student rep that could help the student rep through your, what your perspective would be on something like that? To try to keep some of those eighteen, sixteen remaining engaged.
So like a council of other students that they could, that the board reps could come to to talk?
Yeah, or somebody that could help you do research, or, you know, stay involved with you, or, I don't know, just a thought.
Uh, I actually like that idea a lot, um, on top of that, Mr. Superintendent Barnard and Mr. George go to both NHS and the student council, which is where a lot of those, um, applications are coming from. Um, but I do think it's a good idea to look into maybe keeping a few of those students who weren't able to make it into the rep positions as, like, um, just kind of, uh, feelers throughout the entire school in different sections.
What grades are those students in right now?
Um, so, it, like the both of us, uh, we were able to do just two seniors this year, but, um, currently, the sophomores and juniors are being with that for a possible two seniors, or a junior and a senior to keep the, um, board going year by year.
On the cafeteria serving size, do you, did you look at as far as waste, is there food that's just not being eaten by some, I mean, if people are hungry, you're gonna hear from people that are hungry.
It's, um, it's certain things, so New York State with the cafeterias, that you are required to take, like, a fruit and a milk, even if you don't want it, you still have to take it and have to watch you take it. Um, a lot of the kids, they will eat the main course, especially if they like it or they're really hungry, a lot of the waste that we see is milk and fruit and vegetables. That's usually what we find, um, but in, I think it was for the last month's meeting, uh, we met with, um, Chris Free, uh, Freegree, and we discussed, like, a table that you put the food on that you don't necessarily want, that you would throw away, such as, like, your untouched fruit, you can put on the table if another kid is hungry, or your untouched milk that's unopened if a kid walks out, just to give more, like, quality of the food.
I, I ask that because years ago, it's gotta be like twenty-five years ago, we had an issue where, uh, kindergartners, first graders, they're all getting oranges. But all the oranges were going right in the trash because they couldn't peel an orange. Thank you.
And, um, relatively, we actually have a presentation on food waste, so.
I appreciate you guys going into all those social studies classes and making that effort. Is there, um, I was just curious if there's any formal way that you're getting back information to the student body, or are we hoping they watch the board meeting?
If you would subscribe, right?
We did talk about that. Yeah, so, uh, oh, yeah, no, we, we actually talked about it 'cause we knew that no one, a lot of the students would not watch the board meeting or come to the board meeting. Um, we have, uh, talked to the Cardinal Press, the newspaper that we have, about putting in a section of the different, um, things that we talked about at the board meetings. Um, though we probably, we might not be able to hit every single suggestion, we would be able to hit all five of these trends. And, um, we would also, like, put in a little section, if you want more information about your specific comment, please come to us and we can give you, uh, more information on what we talk about regarding.
Yeah, with the, along the, um, I'm on the newspaper cover, as you guys know, um, I just talked to Mrs. Sasso about that, um, about putting in that little segment for our main newsletter, and she said that we could want to send you that. Great.
Excellent job, that's, uh, love it, and, uh, it's so exciting to hear what you guys find and, and great suggestions, and thanks for working with your peers and with the school administration, kind of figure out, it's great, thank you. All set?
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. Next up, have a present. No, I'm gonna introduce this interview. Perfect, perfect, take it away.
Like to introduce officially Bill Swordoff and the board, our director of food service, and, uh, I know Jill won't get into it, but, uh, she had a, she worked with all the district admin admit, uh, students, uh, back around October, November, right? You know, it was the winter, January, to, uh, do this food waste presentation, and we wanted her to give you an overview tonight of the results to the board, as, as she did to us as the admin chief.
So, uh, December fifth. I, uh, I'm sorry, I just scooped up your screen there, sorry about that. Um, we had a, um, assessment done with our food waste, so I'm not sure if you know, but we're very well regulated by the federal government, the USDA, and we have to support and provide meals, certain components to our meals for all our students, right? So our goal was to kind of gauge them in the waste and what was actually being discarded, okay? So, this is just a quick synopsis of exactly what they did when they came in, and it was basically based on a middle school and high school cafeteria. We didn't get involved in any other areas of the, the building, just, we wanted to focus on the cafeteria. So, um, we had some students that helped us out, we had some middle school and high school students, and they came and they helped take the garbage apart. So if you see on the second page here, there's some photos of actually what was involved with the garbage, and, um,
Quite a project.
Well, if you notice, it's a lot of vegetables.
Yeah, sadly.
So again, we have to provide either a fruit or a vegetable for everyone. So, you know, the whole goal was to try to educate them on, first of all, what do our cleaners do? What, what is, what is the work that they have to put in to clean up our cafeteria? As well as educate them on not taking more food than they actually need to take. They only really need to take three components, we offer five, and I know I'm going to probably a little deeper than you need, but, um, but some of the kids take more than they actually need, I believe, 'cause they think they want it, and then it gets tossed. And so that's what's concerning for everybody. But I got some notes here from, um, the middle school principal, and she sent out a, a synopsis of what the students said to her after they were done with this example or this, um, exercise. And, uh, the first thing she said was, the middle school kids gagged less than the high school kids. They were all in the back here, first of it's cold, it's December, but they had to, they had to go through all of the waste and determine what was recyclable, what was compostable, what was going to the dunk, the trash, right? So they're, they're out there with it, but the bottom line is that they loved it. They, they felt, they, they were freezing though, they just say that, so she brought them some hot chocolate. But they felt good about making, uh, the world a greener place. They also developed an appreciation for the cleaners and what they have to, to go through to clean our, our cafeterias, and well, as well as it opened their eyes to the realities of food waste. So I think it was a very educational process that we went through with them. So, the takeaways basically are, you know, we're going to pursue this, but we're gonna make sure that we do it in a very well-processed manner. Um, we wanna make sure that all of our, our constituents or whatever are involved with this, it's from the cleaners, from the students, from the monitors that are in the cafe. We need to make sure that there's no ripple effect on their jobs that they're currently doing, and educate some of our students about the processes. Anybody have any questions?
Um, I guess I do, I'm not sure exactly what to ask, I guess, it, um, what are some of the things you expect, like, are you expecting some implement, some changes to be implemented that?
Okay. Well, first of all, I, we would possibly like to get these certain containers in the cafes, have them start separating, have, have the, those containers be exactly, um, labeled. We also need to do a training session with them, we need to get, and the gentleman that con, that conducted this will come in and do a, a training session. But the kids have to be part of the stakeholders, they have to see the value of doing this.
The, um, I feel like in the world around us, most of us are, you know, wherever you go, there's oftentimes places that have that, they set the expectation, and it usually doesn't require a whole lot of training now. Whether it's a good job of doing it or not, but like, you go to Wyman's, for instance, they have compostables, the plastic, and then again, nowadays, a lot of these, um, the disposal companies do look sort of a zero sort thing now, I've heard some debate on how well that actually works on the backend, but, but, um, it, it almost seems to me that maybe it's not that big of a stretch to think that we might ask kids to put the food waste in here, and the plastic in here, and the, you know, paper in here or something like that, is that, is that reachable, right?
That's our hope, for sure, yes.
And we've looked at some of the districts around us that have implemented in our, a little bit further along with this, and, um, you know, there's some entry points of where do you want to implement first? Do you want to implement in Jeff's building, where you can teach and grow as they come through? Or do you want to implement at the middle school, where they can then, it, it developmentally can be a little bit quicker and receive faster? So, um, I think we're, we want. So, um, I think we're, we want to look at the fall and say, okay, this fall, what is something that we can take away and adjust, knowing what we've learned from this? Um, one, because we know it's necessary to have the information. But two, um, I think it's, you guys know, since I've come, since I've come in, it's important for our kids and our communities to see when we do these things, that there's, there's follow-through and there's action, and there's meaning behind it for our kids, so, um, yeah, and I think it's, it's really working with those different departments. We talk about, uh, you know, Jeff has talked about, you know, composting, we need to do different things that we have to be prepared for, and, you know, how we do that in a way that's safe, and again, schools are under different compliance factors that we have to think about from even how we do our waste management, so. But our goal is to try to look at a way to implement some, something this fall, based on the information that we have. So is this a program that there's a cost associated with, with somehow that, like, what's the, what are the, what's the precedent about?
Well, it's really gonna depend on what we need, how we need to utilize the, um,
Yes, the stuff, so that's.
How many totes do we need, things like that, yeah, so yes, there's a, there is a cost.
Yeah, so there would be a cost. Okay.
So, so the, the food that's would, that's collected, that's not bad, is that, is the idea they go, they take that to a farmer for hogs and stuff, or are they just separating?
Not that I'm aware of, I'm not sure how this company, they have three separate areas that they work off of. They work off of composting, and then just the, the regular trash, and then recycling. So what he, basically what he said to us in here was that the, the majority of food, um, like milk cartons, cheese stick wrappers, yogurt, that would be landfill. The recycling are the milk cartons, the milk cans that we have our vegetables in and things like that. But compost would be the carrots, the bananas, the bananas field. I'm not sure where they take the food to, that would be a question for them.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think milk cartons were recyclable because of the codeine.
Well, no, milk cartons, landfill.
Oh, landfill, okay.
Yeah.
I do have one other question, um, and also a comment. The question is, there's, uh, I guess we heard from the students, maybe there's some kids who feel like they don't get enough food, and then there's some kids that take too much food, and you made the point, highly regulated, totally get that, right? Like you'd have to offer certain things, or students even maybe must take certain things. Is there any, I mean, seems like, is there any way to work within those boundaries to maybe, should help that balance out a little bit, so then there's not, maybe it also would lower this food waste?
Well, that's something, that's something that, um, Terry and I kind of discussed before. Um, it's very important that we follow food safety and sanitation practices. So, yes, a shared table, a shared cooler, something along those lines.
Or actually, I mean, I mean, we're like, can we serve them a bigger portion of something?
Oh.
Without necessarily precluding them from taking the things they must take, right? I mean, if they take the two extra fruits because they're really hungry, but they, and they're like, man, I don't really want those fruit, but if you would have given them something, you know.
They can get extra fruit, they can get extra vegetables. But as far as the portion size of the main entree, we're very strictly that. There's a lot of fat, sodium, the, actually, the guidelines are gonna be even stricter next year. We have a lot of diabetes, we have a lot of students that have diabetic, have, are diabetic. And it's really, our whole society's been very impacted by what's actually on our food.
Yeah, okay, well, I guess my only other comment is just to say thank you. I know this is one very small sliver of all the work you guys do in food service, and, um, so thanks for taking the time to, um, to look into this and to share it with us, and importantly, thank you for all the work outside of this.
Appreciate it.
Any other to answer questions?
Thank you.
Chris, I just had a quick question for you, you said you had talked to other school districts?
Thank you.
Is there a lot of new districts?
The ones, so I know Whitman runs a program similar to this, um, and Bluefield has a, a, a s- a different program, because they have a form of an ad program, but they, they are looking at, uh, a, a similar type of thing, but they're actually using it, so it's a farming program.
You have so much opportunity.
Yeah, but, um, Whitman is a little bit ahead of us in this process, they actually implemented it in their, um, elementary this year. And so they're, they've actually had the compost containers in there, and they're actually going through the composting, uh, process and, uh, teaching their elementary kids about it, so. And it is, it's really about the separation of those different elements and putting it in the right place. Is what happens from their feedback is that the compostable material gets ruined immediately when they, when something that is from the land can, gets lost into that, right, even because then you can't, it's not compostable anymore, so it's really just trying to.
Regulating.
Yep, and like they have, they have great ideas around like color coordination, and ways to, they get really visible, kid signs, you know, things that we think about that would affect the functioning can apply right to this.
Yeah.
And one of the main things is, yeah, food services already looking at ways to control expenses, like, you're gonna have, they're gonna have to figure out a way that metal, or, well, silverware is usable, and seventy percent of that does not end up in the trash can. So Whitman has some type of magnetic garbage cans, so those are some of the things, but, as Jamie mentioned, you go to Chipotle, and you put the plastic forks in a certain bin, like, that would be two costs, hasn't it? For the food service department to even be able to entertain, especially if we lost national funding of the food service program.
Costly to sort stuff, I don't know.
No, costly, if, if every bunch was served with a plastic fork, yeah, the cost of plastic forks would be, or eighty percent of the metal forks were ended up in the trash can, then.
Because everything goes into the window right now, or whatever, in the dishwasher, is that?
Oh, no, they have to get in the trash first, and then the tray's going in there, yes.
Sorry, and that's just my, I'm just clearly not educated enough, but like, why would they start throwing the forks out?
Because they, because they do. You don't have tangents yet.
Not quite. But, but more than, more than normal, though, is there like, will it get worse, is that what we're saying?
Well, I mean, if you went to buy biodegradable silverware, which is obviously the ultimate goal, but I don't think districts will get there for a while.
Do we not, forgive me, I, I don't, do we, do we do metal silverware?
No.
No, okay.
No, but if we're trying to be.
We do trays, though, right?
You're trying, I know Jill touched on it in a previous, but cutting down on washing of dishes is part of becoming sustainable and, yeah.
And chemical usage, you know, with the machine, and, and staffing to, to handle some of those.
Yeah, and it's cost money to heat all that water to wash the dishes, and a lot of that, it's interesting, there's a whole series of trade-offs there with the same, right? Because you're also paying for the stuff, and even if it's biodegradable, it kind of goes somewhere, and sits around for a while, you know.
It's such a great opportunity for learning, and, you know, for students and, and staff to learn that. Lessons to take into, to, um, someday.
I'm glad Jill's still here and getting this, my kudos to the food service department, because, um, as you know, about a month and a half ago, we lost our cook manager. Uh, Jill was our food, is our food service director, was here one day a week, she's now here two days a week, but a food service, uh, the cook manager kind of oversees the district all five days, and Jill and I were very nervous, and actually, we haven't lost a step, the food service department has stepped up, and we've come up with new goals, we've exceeded things, so we just wanted to give a kudos, especially Jill, on Jill's behalf, that the food service department is crushing it right now, so we wanted to.
Have we ever looked at, instead of the cartons of milk, a milk dispenser? I mean, at high school, a lot of you said a little, a bunch of little kids with cups, that is the name of the dish.
Well, we had to do it during COVID, we had to pour milk from gallon jugs into cups and stuff, and, so we had a little experience with it, but in terms of dispensers, the main thing, correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, is trying to keep the sanitary of the,
The milk.
of the dispenser is a, is probably the most dark drawback, but I don't know if any schools are looking into it. I know it was a hassle for a lot of schools during COVID, but that could have been that it wasn't practiced and it wasn't implemented.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with you, uh, we call it the cow, actually, but, um, and again, it's gotta be, it's gotta be manned. There's gotta be somebody there, because we've had some situations where the kids are fooling around, they're leaving it open. So now there's milk all over the floor, and now the cleaners are involved, you know, and it sounds simple, I know it does, but it's just, sometimes the kids aren't as responsible as we think that they like to be, so, you know, things happen, you know? Um, definitely not with the littles, because yes, you're right, you'd be a lot of spillage and things like that coming on, but, yeah.
QR codes on the cup, like you're at Disney, right, and we're at the new, uh, the new restaurants.
Then we're required to have two different types of milk, so we have, have two different cows, so to speak, if that makes sense to you. There's just so many regulations, it's very anti, that makes sense, we have to follow those guidelines, you know?
Right, awesome.
Thanks again, Jill, then.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right, safe. Tim, you're up. I am up, and, uh, it's kind of been, gonna be similar to the work session, and, uh, we, as we get to the calendar especially, we are in the homestretch, um, before we, uh, we'll get to that slide about candidates, but, um, April thirtieth, which is next week, um, must be next Wednesday, the budget must be completed. And then on Thursday, copies of all the budget, the hundred and thirty-page packet is available in the district office, the business office, all three offices, as well as the community library. Um, May eighth, our next board meeting, pulled two weeks away, we'll be turning it out quickly, we'll be right back here in two weeks. We'll have our budget hearing, uh, May fourteenth will be the deadline for mailing the budget notices. Even though it's not on there, it kind of was in our policy talk, our committee meeting today, today. Tomorrow is the deadline for mailing out the military ballots, so that, our ballot is finished, that kind of starts the process. Uh, absentee ballots for those that are, automatic absentee ballots will also be mailed out tomorrow, so the process has started. Uh, we will be sending out communication, we haven't even spoke on it yet, but we are going to voting machines this year, so, uh, we will be, uh, Ontario County will bring in the machines in, and, uh, we'll hope at the end, eighth o'clock, we'll probably know the results by eight, ten, well, we might have a lot of write-ins this year, so I might be figuring that out, but it won't be ten o'clock, eleven o'clock like usual, so we are very excited about that, and.
Kim's gonna wonder how it is that you're, you know.
Well, we use the whole voting system.
Yeah. Yeah, she know, yep, she knows, she knows as well, and, uh,
She'd wait till she.
Conversation, and, uh, she did the capital project vote, and, uh, she's enjoying her time over here anyway, so, she's happy with it. And then on, uh, May twentieth, eight AM, eight PM, right here, we'll have our, uh, budget vote. Expenditures, uh, New York State budget, uh, we're still waiting, although we are very happy to see the hopeful was in Rochester this week at Food Link, uh, now we'd rather her be working on the budget, but, um, that happened. I think they're all back from the holidays, as, I think they met pretty Thursday, right, and started meeting again today. But just for another extender, um, they are just talking about extenders after extenders, there is no talk about when the budget will be released, as we talked about at the work session. We have our budget set, if, uh, state aid is pulled back, we will use reserves to offset that and get us into next year. We are not going with budget A, budget B, budget C, we are ready for the budget vote, and we'll move on from there. Expenditures, uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six, salaries, equipment, supplies contractual, benefits, debt, service, this is all relatively same than the last two, uh, presentations, uh, maybe a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there has been moved around, uh, talking about, uh, using the voting machines. Uh, in the last month or so, we contracted with Ontario County to do our Jackson election, so that moved from a person's salary to a contractual, so just some things like that have changed in the past month, but pretty much, the, the total budget is the same, and, uh, we are ready to roll. Uh, three-part budget, just like we have to always break it down, administrative portion, uh, uh, going from eleven point three five percent to eleven point nine percent, uh, program budget, uh, increasing, uh, five hundred thousand, but the, only a point one percent of the budget increase, and the capital with a decrease. Staffing priorities, uh, we have a teacher aide retirement, and the district office secretary position has been just a substitute for the remainder of the year, combining those positions, um, we will, next year, we will be one vis, our one district office. Uh, Roxy and myself are moving down to the district office, and, uh, Roxy will be filling those positions, as well as a new, um, office specialist position, which we will campus for that position tomorrow, which will have, uh, oversee our collective care team, as well as our district registrar. Uh, we have a couple, uh, retirements, uh, sixth grade special ed teacher, or sixth grade teacher and special ed teacher retirements that were approved a couple months ago, we had a resignation that we approved today for physical education health, and, uh, we are, we'll be posting, Dr. Weller will be posting two positions at the end of this week to try to get a hold, head up the curve and get the quality candidates in place, uh, long before the summer. Uh, our priority is to increase opportunities for, um, reading and math interventionists, as well as enrichment throughout, um, this, especially at the elementary level, opportunities, even at secondary opportunities for enrichment, as well as reading and math interventions. Impact, uh, one of the concerns that's come out in all the talks is the impact of student behavior on student learning and engagement. Uh, we are looking to help with, a position to help with that, as well as Dr. Weller's, uh, presentation and the principles in March about, uh, declining enrollment, and we continue to monitor that as we move forward to be fiscally responsible. Twenty-five, twenty-six revenues, uh, the tax cap, we could, uh, raise the tax levy by four point oh two percent, or we can increase it by three hundred twenty-eight thousand, zip hundred, or zero ninety-nine, but we are looking for a tax increase to eight point three one eight five six five, which is a one point nine one percent tax increase. Uh, state aid, as we talked about, if, uh, state aid is cut in the, in New York's final budget, we will just increase that reserve line and use more reserves to offset the budget, but we will go out at that one point, one point nine one percent tax levy increase asked for. Tax rate change, uh, we anticipate eighteen point one three will be the tax rate, but last year we anticipated nineteen point something, and it ended up being seventeen point seven nine, so with Farmington reassessing again, that, uh, the true rate will probably be lower than eighteen point one three, but that is a conservative estimate, so even with that increase, it is lower than, uh, the previous year in twenty-three, twenty-four. Other propositions, uh, bus proposition, utilization of the budget's purchase reserve, two large passenger buses, uh, one mini bus, existing funds, no budget or tax impact. When the state budget comes out, we still have not heard any rumblings on if there's going to be any movement on the electric bus initiative, and we haven't heard either way, we've heard a couple things holding it up. I think I mentioned at the work session, cell phones being one of the, the ban on cell phones being one of the major holds up right now, but nothing about electric buses and pushing that down the road yet. Uh, board of education candidates, we have two seats, a five-year term. Uh, Scott has turned in his petition to run again, he was the only one where you received a petition from, so the ballot will also include for two, uh, lines on that ballot for people to write in, up to two writing candidates as well. Any questions? We'll be right around in two weeks for the hearing, which won't be a presentation unless the, uh, community has questions.
Tim, I just want to say that, um, every year, I, in my opinion, you know, few years into this, every year this has gotten better, um, in the sense that, um, bringing forward a really good, um, telling the story really well about what we're, the changes we're making, and why the budget is what it is, um, why we're going out with the numbers, we are, so that everyone can really understand in plain terms what we're doing for the kids, and what the money's being spent on, and what the changes are to the budget, so. I know you guys also do your road show around the community, so I just wanted to say thanks, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for that, and, um, you know, I look, you know, look forward to that, you know, going forward.
We were supposed to kick off our road show last week, but it was the Lady Lions, the Jets, so unfortunately, we weren't able to. It was like that next day, so we weren't able to present, so we have.
We start Tuesday.
We start Tuesday, so.
Between, between the twenty-ninth and the fifteenth, we do the state.
Yep, and then the Lady Lions might have us present again if they have a, a location in the meeting, so.
You guys good to go? We've seen most of this, I think, Jake, most of it. All right, thanks, Tim. All right, uh, keeping things moving here, CSE and CPSC. Uh, the board of education, on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, pursuant to education law, approves the CSE and CPSC recommendations as presented. Is there a motion for Matt, thank you, and a second? Uh, Barb, Barb, any questions?
Can we just have it again, Jake, I wasn't quite sitting down the motions.
Oh, uh, Matt and Barb.
Thank you.
Um, good to go? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Great. Thank you. Uh, claims audit, any question that's in your packet, any questions, if any looks to be pretty much in shape there? All right. Good to go. Um, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
So just the, the first one, I'm not gonna go through it verbatim, but this time of year, your school calendar is incredibly helpful because if you look at the month of May, I was just going through this with my family, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten different evening opportunities to go and enjoy things at our school, from the spring arts festival, which is in the middle of May, to our, um, uh, high school concerts that are at the end of May, so just for folks that are listening in and folks that are here tonight, uh, that may, that calendar is very helpful in May and to board, I'll send you, uh, specific dates, so you'll definitely just look at that document that we shared, so. Uh, I did wanna take a minute to do a specific, uh, shout out to our, um, group that pulled off the musical this spring, so, as a district, we are incredibly grateful to our music department, specifically Chris Knapp, uh, Anita Olson, who's not in the music department, but oversees the, the musical and assisting Chris, um, and Andy White, along with many of the dedicated staff and community members who played a vital role bringing this year's high school musical to life. The production was more than just a performance, it's a powerful testament to what can be achieved when students are engaged and inspired and given the opportunity, part of something meaningful. The passion, creativity, countless hours of preparation were evident in every aspect of the show, from the music and the staging to the lighting and the set design. Behind the scenes and on stage, our students were given the space to grow, collaborate, and find their voice. The arts have a unique ability to support the social, emotional, and academic development of our students, and this production was a shining example of that impact. Music in particular has the ability to bring people together, build confidence, and foster resilience in our young people. For many of our students, being part of the musical is more than just an extracurricular activity, it's a defining moment in their school experience, a teacher's teamwork, perseverance, and self-expression. Thank you again to everyone who contributed to creating such a memorable and enriching experience for our students. It was a reminder of the power of the arts and education and the strength of our school community when we come together with a shared purpose. That's it.
I would, I would like to add on to that, that my wife enjoyed it so much, and we didn't have kids in the play, that she went twice and she was begging me to go Sunday. So you enjoyed it, yeah. Much, Jesse?
Yep, I did go to the Sunday before to make it on the, the night ones, but I went on Sunday and thought we did a great job as well, so. As always.
I was just gonna update the board that, uh, we did receive the election results earlier today and Heather Bachman was elected, as well as the other two candidates that we nominated, so they were those successful candidates.
Excellent. Jeff, give, advocate for, for BOSI's board.
Yep.
Great. All right, um, well, thank you for that and a little move to committee updates.
Where do we want to start?
So, yeah, the branding committee, everyone saw the, the recent message review, Chris, um, Scott could talk a little bit about where the message came from and what we shared with the community, which was just our draft of where we are with the mascot images. Is there anything specific that you want to point out in that meeting? And really that the goal we made the same is that at the June board meeting, we will, um, bring the board the full package and share what that would look like, um, and this was another kind of opportunity for us to provide the community with a second look, um, and give some, some last feedback before we send it back to the graphic designers, which the branding committee will meet with them again in May and then bring that forward in June. Then we have our, uh, policy committee, which we're gonna, we're gonna talk about.
I agree with what you're saying. I mean, we have policies on the docket for.
So we can add on that, the code of conduct committee we met today, Jen, if you wanna give an update, we're.
On pace, right on track to, to have a, the content ready for the board to adopt in July, right, everything will be done in June.
Yep.
Uh, we also talked about some, um, features that we'd like to potentially add to make it a little more user-friendly too, so like once we get through content, there's some really good ideas today. I don't know much I'm pretty excited about, so.
I'm not sure I, I follow, can, can you just say that a little more?
Sure, so like if you look at our code of conduct now, it's just words on paper, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not even, if you're a parent and you wanna look for something, you're digging, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So like table, a better table of content, some charts, some, maybe QR codes there.
Great.
Ooh, brings some marketing savvy to the thing.
Yeah, a lot of good ideas.
All right, excellent. And then of course, um, policy committee met today, thank you very much, uh, Jen and Scott. We, truly, we have to, do we wanna talk about the ones we reviewed today?
You guys can.
Something that we reviewed today. Um, so today we were, ma- mainly, I guess, I've got them all in front of you here, mainly there was, um, a lot of, any, um, employment, s- HR space.
Absentee, yeah, absentee, um.
Yeah, teacher certifications, things like that, yep.
Absentee ballots, um, employee backlogs, donations, alcohol, background drug, um, professional, uh, growth and development, certification and qualifications, um, and recommended actions, um, professional learning, uh, incidental teaching, and probation in tenure, and temporary personnel, and employment of retired.
Thanks. And then I, it, um, you know, reminds me that, like, those were in the package, so I guess part of this opportunity is for anyone else, so I don't know that I have anything notable to report, most of those policies had sort of, uh, they were rudimentary stuff that was based on state law, a little bit of it was kind of subjective, but, um, if anyone else had questions, if you read through them in the packet, with the policy committee could go ahead and talk to, talk a lot about it now if you're, and it was interesting.
Do you have any just questions?
Yeah.
The ones we talked about today, I didn't send, I didn't want them in the box or send them out, so they're.
No, they'll be in the.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
They'll be, they'll be the next one, the next board, the next board.
The ones we talked about in March are.
My mistake, I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna send all the ones, but I mean, I just went off the email and you sent me one to the attachment, so I guess that's my, my fault, but, um.
And we did talk about maybe, that's why I've had mine with stuff.
Okay, I think, would you guys be okay with that in the future, we give the poli-, so policy committee could review them today and you maybe would have them also, then we could, the policy committee could talk with the board about what we found during our deeper dive. So when, and then we could vote if some of them were urgent or anything, but otherwise they would just come up in the next meeting, is that sound of it?
Yeah.
Jen, is that voting? I thought we were in that direction.
I think so, I thought so.
Work is gonna move.
That ways they had questions and their comments, they were sure, making a range.
Yeah, yeah, that makes this conversation productive, instead of us just saying it, it's like, you could've, if you read it, we could have a conversation and, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll kind of track that direction then, so, okay. So, that was a list of the policies we reviewed.
So you have ten, no, twelve.
Yeah, they did, ten plus, maybe.
Yeah, ten will look forward to it, I thought.
Um, and then in a minute we'll get to new business, which is the policy vote, so we'll have a vote on the ones we reviewed last time, we got a couple of things in that stack there. Um, but before we get there, we have, so financial, we get into, oh, sorry, committee updates, so that wraps that up, I think, right? So then, board of education goals, you guys, I just wanna use this time to, to just make two notes, we, I think we've done a great job with the goals this year, maybe have a few things left to, to check off in the next couple of months if we, if we can, um, but we will very quickly here be moving into the superintendent evaluation and then also our board self-evaluation, so keep an eye out for emails. Um, I know Superintendent Bernard is wrapping up his self-evaluation and of course, obviously a core part of our job is to then do an evaluation and then we kind of reconcile those, whatever stuffs in there, so, um, keep an eye out for that and the board self-eva-, I wanna make sure we're ahead of that this year, so we're not kind of getting ready to the end of June and July and all that, so, sound good?
Good time to, good time to log in, make sure you got it.
Yeah, I bet I gotta log in, make sure everyone's updated and there and get you guys all logged in, yeah, that's a great point, Scott, actually. All right, um, any questions, can I hear that? All right. All right, we'll do financial reports, um, treasurer report, any questions regarding that? All right, I'll go ahead and accept that, I'm a board. Uh, driver education fee, I'll go ahead and read this, we do this again. Board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit of education law, approves to have a tuition fee for the twenty-twenty-five summer drivers' education program remain at one hundred and fifty dollars. You have a motion? Scott, you have a second, Jen, thank you. Um, questions, discussion?
I wish it was free, but it's cheaper than the four hundred.
Yep, fair, fair point, or, you know, point taken. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. Very good, thank you. Uh, BOSI's cooperative bid, I think many of you have seen this before, just our subscription to the cooperative purchasing program of BOSI's, uh, the board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit of education law, approves the attached cooperative bid resolution. You have a motion? Is there a motion?
I'm sorry.
Amy, a second, uh, Barb, thanks Barb, uh, anyone, any questions on the cooperative purchasing? Also, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we've got a memo A with RJFA. Lots of A, and the APPR. Um, board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit to education law, approves the attached memorandum of agreement with Brad Jack Faculty Association averting APPR scoring. You have a motion for that? Okay. You want? Barb, thank you. A second? Uh, Amy? Awesome. Any questions on that, uh, memo A? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries, thank you. Um, this is a pretty cool one and, uh, I wanna say something here, let's go ahead and do the resolution, I wanna, I wanna tell you guys something pretty cool in a second. Um, so the board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit of education law, uh, approves the Bredeisens Scholarship Foundation Trust. I'll take a motion for that, we got one, Matt, thank you, you have a second, Amy. Um, so something really cool, uh, I know that the district has been working diligently, in fact, I was specifically credit Brian George for working really closely with, uh, Mr. Phil Bredeisens, who's been extremely generous, uh, with our students in recent years and, um, at some point in the process, he reached out and asked if he could meet with the board president and I wasn't expecting that and, um, but they, uh, clearly they were too worried about putting me in front of him on behalf of the district, so they asked if, if I wouldn't, I, I did, I took the opportunity to meet with Phil Bredeisens, had lunch with him and, um, other than a little bit of a background knowledge, I didn't know him very well, but, um, I spent over an hour, uh, just talking with the guy and, uh, just an excellent person, very generous, his, his aims for why he does what he does and, and actually here it's a background on how, you know, his personal, um, and professional success and things like that and just his philosophy and, um, how, where he, the angle he comes at wanting to help graduate students is not only, um, um, impressive in and of itself, but also, um, the magnitude of the difference he's able to make is really, is really, and, um, I know many of us are grateful for that, so I just wanna share with you guys that, uh, that little tidbit and so this, I know he's put together an excellent, um, agreement with the school as to how folks would, what are the expectations for who qualifies for this, the scholarship money through this program, and he's put together and how the district will be, uh, play a huge role in selecting the students that can, um, uh, benefit the most and where that money will make the most difference. And, uh, I don't, Brian, is there anything you wanna add to that? I, you're, you're looking at me like, I feel like you might wanna say something, but you don't have to.
No, I was just listening to you, Jake, you're doing a great job.
Did I, did I get it all right so far?
I was, I was just gonna say.
Yeah?
Mr. Bredeisens has always given an abundance of funds for scholarships, uh, this is, this is.
Is this an increase?
Oh, yes.
Is it a trust, so it's, it's interest generated?
Yes, literally we have to spend a percentage of it every year.
That's what.
And with interest, it's, um, we are happy, we are joyful this, but.
It's forever.
It will take, it will take due diligence to follow and make sure we are spending enough, which is, which is always great to say.
I mean, the money that he's put in that trust and, um, you know, the district essentially will be, uh, designated as the decision maker of who, who gets the money, although I'm sure he has the ultimate, um, you know, say, but he wants the district, well, people close to his kids to be, to really own that process, but, um, it has the ability to help on an annual basis, I don't know, a third of our graduating classes, let's say, could be potentially eligible for significant money that would make a difference to them. And the variety of eligibility is not just four-year schools, not even just two-year schools, it's really any nonprofit educational institution, could be a certificate-bearing or career, um, you know, uh, career training type, um, you know, program, that, does that sound about right, you guys, to get that? Yeah, so I mean, it's very flexible, even though there's a specific intent on it.
That, um, that's terrific, the way that it's, from what I understand, the, the way that he's setting it up, um, I just wanted to make a mention, imagine Warren Preston's scholarship, he was president of PEPAC a hundred years ago, he died in the nineteen fifties and we're still dishing out that money, seventy years later.
Yes, yeah, that's an excellent thing. And I got to hear a little bit about his, you know, early days and he graduated from the old school and then, you know, right around the time he built this facility and so when he came back, so it was an interesting, uh, story, so. Yeah, um, great guy, we're, you know, I know we're all extremely grateful and, and so what we're approving is basically the district's part, district's commitment to be part of that process of selecting and ensure that that money gets, um, given to, you know, um, qualifying recipients and then we follow up a little bit with how we're doing and make sure we continue to buy, so, it's a good thing, so.
Would this be the first trust then, or do we have anything else that's like that? I mean, I know there's so much contribution.
Yeah, there are, there are some yet trusts, that's, like when Matt mentioned, that's to be the trust now and, um, but, yes, the magnitude of it and the, just the basis around it is a large modus.
Yeah, what a, what a fortunate situation for us as a district, you know, all the things to do for the kid, but they have folks come in, they're very successful, they're great in the area, that's pretty, that's really good, so, okay. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and vote then. Any, unless there's any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, very good. All right, we're getting close here, you guys. Uh, world language club, uh, this is, we approved the club last time, this is the trip, the, approving the agreement, the ability of the district to enter into the contract, get there, we'll go on the trip. So, board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit of education law, approves the world language club's overseas trip per the attached resolution. You have a motion for that, please, Matt, thank you, uh, second, you have a second remaining. Um, any questions, you guys see that EF tours, is the, they're highly reputable, as I understand? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries? All right, that wraps up the financial section, so now we're on to policy. So, these, the policies that were for sure in your packet, that we did talk about last time, the policy we reviewed, we've recommended them for approval, uh, we're planning to go through them all, there's been, we have questions, in a moment here we can entertain them, so I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Be it, uh, the board of education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, in pursuit of education law, approves the waiving of the second reading and approves policy one thirteen thirty, thirteen thirty-six, fifteen thirty, fifty-five twenty, fifty-five seventy, and sixty-one thirty as presented.
Motion.
Motion, Jen, and a second from Scott, thank you. Our policy committee stepping up. Uh, are there any questions or concerns with the, these helpful policies?
Did you wanna give like a brief rundown for public for what those policies are?
Uh, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll try to do it really quickly then. Um, thirteen thirty, uh, asked to do the appointments by the board of education, um, different positions, tax collector, school position. Thirteen thirty-six, duties of the extra classroom activity fund, central treasurer, a bunch of particulars about how we manage the extra classroom funds. Um, board minutes, it's some basic changes to how we handle minutes, uh.
We've got the list here, can we finish?
You got the list, yeah, please do, Scott. I'm having to walk through.
MNT, military, and early mail ballots, financial.
Oh, that's, that's a.
Yeah, we've done it, excellent. Um, fifty-five seventy, financial accountability.
Oh, okay.
Sixty-one thirty, evaluation of personnel.
Okay, so, not a lot of real hot ones. Not a lot of real hot ones in there, yes, if I could say it that way. And we have one up for discussion though, so, all right, go ahead, sorry, let me, um, I guess, are we ready to vote then? Sorry, let me just.
Yeah, we took the first one, Scott.
Okay, yep. Any, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries, very good. Complete the circle of life there on our policy review. All right, um, Policy fifteen ten, regular board meeting and rules discussion. Um, this one, the policy committee wanted to bring forward for discussion with the full board. And I guess, let me just open the floor for any dis- Scott or Jen, do you wanna put any, up any specifics you think we should talk about, or is anyone, anyone can start the discussion if not?
Is it the video conferencing, is that the reason why you guys wanted to discuss it?
Uh, video conferencing, we talked about the, uh, portion of the minutes, uh, et cetera.
Man, I would say, we wanted to discuss it because it goes to the heart of how we operate some of the things that are really part of our meetings.
So, not changing.
No, no, there's nothing major that's changing, and we're not suggesting this should be, we just wanted to give the full board an opportunity to like speak out.
Was thirty minutes being on yet under?
Public comment.
Did we change?
We wanted to, we wanted to look through to be sure. Public comment, 'cause there was a lot of differences, like, we can only talk about things that are on the agenda, so what we list on public comment on our agenda is different than what we have listed in public comment in our talks.
Yep.
So it's something we should cross-reference to make sure it makes match up. So, again, it doesn't have to happen tonight, but it's definitely something that we want, that they should mirror each other on.
Yeah. Anyway, so like, yeah, I guess there would be a change, so Matt, forgive me, I guess maybe I sort of went through that too fast. Like, so for instance, it says, the public is not permitted to discuss topics, so pub- in the public comment section, not permitted to discuss topics unrelated to the district, okay, I mean, but then it says matters unrelated to the agenda. We historically allow people to comment on anything, I don't, I've never really seen that to be a problem, if it were, we could change that, but I don't think we need to. Um, and or matters involving specifics, of course, we don't allow for, for reading.
So that's where we got into discussion.
Yeah.
So, public comment is a public comment, if it's not on the agenda, they still have the right for a public comment. Right, that's where we got into discussion.
That's the purpose of it.
And that's my line out, that, that was why we wanted to talk about it.
We have, we have.
The timing too, right?
It's, from a legal and from the way public, um, meaning laws are written, we can certainly, in many districts, many other public entities restrict public comment to topics on the agenda, we historically have not. I don't, this would change that, otherwise we strike the language and keep it as is, where we don't put in that particular restraint, I'm fine with that, if you guys, as good as you guys, I'm not advocating that's really changes to what we do today.
Well, I, um, it's, it's, it's not just about us, I mean, we, we don't think there'd be a problem, but you don't know if the president's gonna be fat years from now, you know?
Yeah.
You wanna, you wanna continue that free, that people don't go in and feel comfortable in asking us questions that are, would normally be uncomfortable.
We had the example two weeks ago, right, where they came in, not on the agenda, right?
Yeah, I'm a fan of allowing that, and I wouldn't wanna change it and then just break our own policy a lot, right? We would wanna make sure that if we're adopting a policy, it reflects what we do today, and so that would be, so we would change that language, so, we, we won't vote on this today. So feel free to take more time to look through it, that's one, I don't know if there's any other major, did we, we change it to two, is this change it to two minutes?
Art says two, this says three. Policies that are three are current genocides.
So.
Current says ten.
I sort of, I sort of the thirty minutes, because I think we talked about thirty minutes are restricted to ten talking.
Right.
Ten speakers.
Ten speakers.
I, I'm fine with that, I feel like if we get much over a half an hour, you know, it becomes an impediment to us.
But that was a point why I talked about it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the other, uh, discussion we had was that it says, um, the board may request, but will not require speakers to identify themselves, and somewhere else it says even to put their address on the sign sheet, I said, which is, uh, which we currently have, a sheet over there with the addresses.
I think you have to identify yourself, how are you gonna give a response to them?
Right, but that's just what this policy says, so we were, we wanted to have, talk about that, even if it's limited or some assistance.
We have to be a resident, correct?
Um, in the past, like, we haven't, like.
Not by law.
Well, we haven't, or we've allowed employees to speak in the past as well.
I think it's our discretion, I think it's our discretion.
Okay, I hear you.
Like, so our policy could set whatever we want that to be.
Like, why not, we had a speaker from Ken and Eggwell earlier, and we wouldn't have known that if she hadn't told us that in this, when she was speaking, so things like, just like that.
Um, would it make sense for us to just make those a few tweaks and aligns basically with what we already do today, and then if anyone wants to discuss further changes?
I don't know, you know, it's, that's kind of a, I can see one way, and I can see the other way, you know, if somebody from outside our district is giving us information that's beneficial that we wouldn't otherwise think about or know about, that's something we should hear. But then, I don't wanna hear about somebody's problems from twenty years ago in a different school.
Me either. I tend to lean that way as well, Matt, but I think for us to try and regulate that is gonna be very difficult, so like, do we, what's our way of like validating that?
You gotta look up every address when you put it on.
If they, yeah.
What's the district's need to sign up? Twenty-four hours in advance, so they can't do that. Like District Kirk has, you have to, like, you have to just to perk them twenty-four hours in advance so they can do that.
I feel like as a board, that we're, one of our major goals, and as long as we're superintendent, is transparency, and our openness to communication, and I wouldn't want to do anything to restrict that. I think we should be consistent in that, like, if, if people want to come speak, I don't think it needs to align with our agenda. And if people from out of the district, I'm also fine with that, it's not something that typically happens. I, I just think as a board, we, that's kind of been how we've run things, I mean, we want input, and we want to be open to, and it really hasn't been an issue.
It's an issue.
But I don't want it sort of twenty-four hour, no.
No.
You're walking the door, you sign up.
I don't wanna limit the ability for the community to communicate.
It's just insane, part of the reason why I think it got into policies, that people limited to district presidents is outside organizations, national organizations.
Books.
Um, coming in to speak on, maybe not the behalf of the community, so, I, I just think that's why it was put in the policies.
Right. Right.
Not saying either way, I'm just saying that probably.
Yeah, it's very challenging topics for everybody, but I think a lot of policies are really placed, you know, the thing about policies that we all think about, right, is that policies, they're not, they're not essential until you need them to be essential, and then you just wanna make sure that they work, and I think that's your job, that's supposed to do, to protect the district and protect the board, so.
And the good news is, if we continue with the, the general sort of flipperness that we have, we can come back and change this, right, like, it's not a one and done thing. We decide there's a problem that's happening, we can put Matt and make an adjustment in that. This would refresh some of the general verbiage and things, we'll go back and align it, is that someone on the table worked to align it?
We should work with their, maybe bring it back from, in May.
Yep, and then we'll bring it back up for discussion.
No, and you can always waive it at the meeting too. If you need more time, if you need more time, we can always waive the time.
It's like on the, or about tables.
Oh, you mean in terms of the amount of time to speak? Yeah, that's, there's a discretionary element of that too, but at least the policy gives us grounding on to say this is, you know, this is what we have.
You want that when you're getting somebody to stop. That's what you want.
We have to do the work of the word. Okay, great, well, thank you for the discussion there, no action. Um, oh, was there a question?
No, I'm out.
All right, that takes us to Policy, um, eighty-four forty. Um, did you, oh, you guys have it in your seat, right? Favorite copies, so, this is a policy that has to do with, um, homeschooling, and we, the board spoke about this at one of our prior meetings, and that's public comment on the matter, um, as well as this is related to the public comment from the beginning of this session. And you have, I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't know this, do you have the language in here?
Yep, the policy, the first page is our current policy, second page is the, uh, comments from our policy coordinator, Justine, who obviously is not willing to review this. Third page is adjusted, adjusted policy language, the board review, with the red being updated from our, um, school attorney, separate from our, um, policy, our policy guidance from the year. So the last page is what the board is looking at, uh, tonight compared to what we have in the first page, so what the goal, this language could be embedded into the, our current policy if the board decided to do that.
Yeah, and I, I wanna give a quick kind of summary here, 'cause I know we did chat about it, but I, there's a few important points, so, little, very brief, kind of, that, you know, taking it back a minute to where we were. Um, so this has come through our regular policy process, so that's important to say, um, although it's fortunate that it's relevant to some recent, um, you know, inquiries that have been made on the subject. Um, the school's current policy, um, does not permit homeschool students to participate in any extracurricular activities. Um, we cannot, by state regulations, allow, uh, homeschool students to participate in sanctioned sports teams that compete, that's not allowed. Um, but that does leave open the possibility of students participating in clop, extracurricular, uh, clubs. And we historically have not allowed that, there are concerns, our district legal representation and our, um, policy advisors, uh, generally do not, uh, hadn't advised us to do that in the past, because it's, there's a lot of number of different concerns with that. But as we had a good discussion as a group, and I actually wanna thank Amy for just kind of suggesting that we really take a close look at, we heard there were some others, there were a few schools out there that were allowing that, so we did some research to find out what their policies looked like. And, um, we did find a, a sample policy from Gannada, they had, did a surprisingly good job of putting some caveats and conditions that would both balance the interests of the district with the, the ability to allow us, to, to give us the ability to allow homeschool students to participate, subject to those considerations, and so the things in here, um, uh, let's see, I, I'm gonna read part of this, uh, part of this, so, the board shall permit homeschool students to participate in certain, this is potential language we could add. The board shall permit homeschool students to participate in certain other extracurricular activities as long as they can provide either documentation of immunization to, or in, or a medical exemption for immun- immunization from the same community. Those communicable diseases required entry into the public schools and provided the following conditions are met, so here's the conditions for you guys to be thinking about. Uh, a request has been submitted to and approved by, approved by the principal of the relevant school, note, requests and approvals could be one-time, specified time, or without expiration. So there's some flexibility there, but it has to go to the principal for review. Enrolled students receive first priority over homeschool students should an activity have a cap on attendance. The district does not, and the district does not incur any incremental cost to accommodate inclusion of the homeschool student in the activity. Uh, and the parents and students are familiar with and abide by all district policies, particularly the code of conduct. Um, specifically, the board will permit homeschool students to participate in non-credit-bearing organized school activities such as clubs and sports, other than interscholastic sports, I left out a, a first sentence which addressed that. Participate in band and or group music lessons, if these activities are considered to be extracurricular, not credit-bearing or graded or required for class. Use school facilities such as library and career information center, if such facilities are not in use by district students, and there's no disruption to school activities, and there is mutual advance agreement on the part of all involved parties, including designation of the facility to be used at such time use meetings, so we gotta keep track of what's happening. Um, couple key points there, so, yeah, it seems like a lot, but you know what, it's, um, when you look at it, most of the mainstream requests we get are gonna satisfy all those with a small amount of effort. An important thing to note is that if we adopt this language, it gives the district, specifically our administration, the ability to review these requests, it doesn't bind them, that anybody who walks up that's being homeschooled, that lives in our district limits, gets to do anything they want as far as extracurriculars and anything. So, we, we really have to protect our students, our district, from situations that could arise that would be out of our control, that would be potentially problematic, and their way of doing that, and quite honestly, we're asking extra of our administrators to be, to, to develop, administer, and take on that process. But if we do that, I get the impression, and I'll ask Superintendent Bernard to comment in a moment here, that they're willing to do that, um, if we choose to implement this policy. So can I ask you to just share any additional thoughts for what we're considering?
Yeah, I think that, what the, in consideration to the board, I think it's similar to our current policy in regards to not out-of-district students attending the school. In that, we have caveat language in there that the principal or the principal's designated group are the ones that make the recommendation, because they are gonna have the most, the, the most information to make that the, the best and safest decision for the students and the staff. And this per, first piece, um, a request provided, a request has been submitted to and approved by the principal, is, uh, of the relevant school, is going to put that in the same hands. So, if it comes to elementary school, middle school, high school, those principals will go through a, a process to make sure that not only do they follow the steps which are in the policy, but do they have information or other things that would make it more likely that this student should engage? Or less likely, because there may have been something that is not public knowledge that the principal has privilege to, that may make them want to have further question, or talk about if this is a good fit for the school community.
When, when you say out of district, you mean a student that is not attending Red Jacket, or somebody who lives outside the school district, or?
Someone, our current policy about someone who lives outside the district policy.
He's drawing, just drawing a comparison.
A just comparison.
When, when we, if we get a student that says, I don't live in your district, but your policy says I can pay tuition, it's not a, a free-for-all, they have to come in, meet with the administrator, there's a process, they have some guardrails there that the administration, um, has control over, and that protects the district. So basically, we're kind of drawing a comparison, we introduce a similar process to prevent problematic situations that could arise from allowing, even though they would be in district, homeschool, that is still a requirement, but we would be allowing them to participate alongside our Red Jacket students. We put in place that same level of, um, caution, you know, of, of guardrails essentially managed by our administrators, so that's the comparison.
And the other piece too, just to point out, that is very specific to this, is that the, they have to abide by policies and code of conduct. So that's, that's powerful language for our administrators, because then they can act accordingly to remove a student, or to potentially penalize a student if they do something that puts, that, that goes against or breaks our code of conduct.
But there's nothing in our policy right now that automatically prohibited, if, should this be adopted, that would automatically prohibit it then because of another technicality in a policy somewhere else.
The homeschool student from participating?
Yeah. As far as policies and attendance or something to that.
No, this, I mean, this, well, this encompasses what, specific to home construction. We may have different attendance policies, but this policy would, if we had an attendance policy that was specific for students in the school day, it wouldn't be applicable to homeschool students.
All right. So I'm just. If we somehow encounter something like that, we could always come together and resolve that with a policy adjustment as well.
Right, but to that point, with our code of conduct, we do outline eligibility, so if we do have a homeschool or homeschooler student who is not turning in the appropriate paperwork to Dr. Weller from the homeschool, then that would be a conversation to say.
So, so homeschoolers do turn in paperwork, yes, to the school?
Every quarter.
By the mark of the year.
Right, so there is that piece, because our code of conduct is outlined in here.
Is it better five weeks or every ten weeks?
Every ten.
Don't we do it more frequently here for students?
Well, therein lies the reason why there was always some concern, right?
It's why it's.
But we're just, we're saying that, you know.
Like ten weeks, you're out, they're done.
Right, that's the hard part.
Yeah, but on, on the contrary, then the penalty would be for ten weeks, you're out.
Right.
There might be some particulars to weigh there, you know what I mean, and we're introducing more complexity for the district, quite honestly, but the question is, do we wanna do that in service of offering some opportunity that?
Yeah, I mean, you're doing it for the benefit of the kids, not because it's more difficult on our, yeah. Can I ask some other questions, or you guys got some more?
Is it related?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, in the parentheses there, other than inters- interscholastic sports, I know it's in there because the state doesn't allow it to do it, should the, should we just say, uh, unless, you know, unless not allowed by state law, or something, then, because if the state changes their, what if they do, then we would have to go back and change it.
Well, we just say, because the state doesn't allow it.
Well, probably what we wanna put is like a, per nis for regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I think it makes it, I think it's better so that, uh, somebody else reading it thinking, well, why don't they change this, it's, we don't have that, we don't have that choice.
Subject to. Subject to this, uh, yeah, maybe it's.
Regulations.
Double check with, double check with our team, if they're good, but we're at school.
And, okay, since we're talking about the library here, um, such facilities are not in use by district students, so if you have after-school, the students going into the library to study or read, whatever, I know it's a hypothetical, would those homeschool kids also be able to go in the library at the same time to study or read or whatever? I mean, it's not a class, but it is open to students.
That's a great cover of that, right?
Well. Well.
Says such students are not used by such.
Advanced agreements, so there's gotta be mutual advanced agreements.
See, one thing I would say, and you tell, help me tell me what this do it, this is really the section on extracurricular participation. And so, this is simply addressing whether they can participate extracurriculars, and I don't think this is really intended to address, can they come in and use the library side-by-side with the students? Now, could there be a discretionary discussion there, if they wanted to create a book club?
They have a, they have a reading club.
Yeah, and I think that would be the situation under which you'd start to employ, you start to look at, it's like, oh, reading club, okay, they'd be in the library, and you probably, how would you, would you handle that, there'd be discretion there, I think?
I think this language is here, they'd have to have mutual advancement on the part of all of the authorities, including designation of the facility to be used at the time of such use. So, they'd have to go through a facility request form, and go to Tim, Jeff, and the building principal, and it would have to be, it would have to go through that process, it couldn't be.
The club, the club would.
Like a club, yeah.
Yeah, it is, I don't know that this is intended for individual students as well, I think that's part of it, it's like the context of the youth this, one student isn't, you know.
Right, but I just don't believe in things that clear that.
One student can't just show up by Tuesday and just not use the facility.
Right, because I'm a homesc- I mean, it's not a, I'm a homeschool student, I'm here, I'd like to use the library today, like, I don't think that's what we're talking about here.
That's everything.
I'm not saying we wouldn't allow that, maybe we would, I don't know, I'm not here to speak for, maybe, I'm sure that would be a, a usual request, but.
That would be, say, there's any outside organization, they'd have to have an insurance policy, meaning the district has a second insurance.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot to consider, some clubs, this is gonna be straightforward, right, clubs that are off-site, carry their own insurance, fund their own activities, those clubs are gonna have easier time, there's clubs that, that use school facilities, they're gonna also, you know, easily integrate students, there's gonna be some, people might wanna start a club, it might be really hard to fit within this, and we'll have to, you know, but, better than maybe a blanket, nothing allowed, I feel like that we're, we're heading in the right direction.
No, I think, I agree, I think we are in the correct, I think we are in the way, I'm just thinking back a few years ago.
Please don't.
It's always a lot of stuff.
I know, I know, okay, well, I think we're pretty, I, unless, you know, you feel like we've a- addressed that fairly well, I mean.
No, I, I think this is good, good job.
Okay, cool, do you guys want to, does anyone wanna move to amend the agenda to consider that, to add that language?
I don't think it need, I, I don't think it needs to be amended, I just think we just cleared.
No, 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 I'm sorry, our meeting, this is not on our, there is no vote, there's no vote for this, but, um, well, I guess it's on the agenda. We could make, I think, I guess we're already on an agenda item addressing this policy, so.
It's only a discussion, so you would have to amend the agenda to amend the meeting.
So, we could, right, so someone could make a motion to, so here, I'll, I'll just say it aloud, and then if someone wants to, you can, so the motion would be to amend policy eight four four zero to include the attached, or, you know, the reference language, um, about extracurricular participation, um, as presented in this handout, essentially, um, so, is that?
There would have to be some part in the amendment, just cause this page that we're discussing right now is only in the board section of board docs, so I think we would have to make this public as well, with changes. It should go in the public part of the agenda. Removing the school, removing the school's name and putting our name in it.
Oh, yeah, of course, so, tell, help me out then, though, are you saying, Tim, what happened?
With the changes, cause you asked me, uh, you've also asked Superintendent Bernard to make a change to, uh, other than interstate, so.
I mean, here's the thing, we could just keep, I guess the question is, are we able to get this done tonight, if we wanted to?
Yes, I think so, but we have to, we should also make this part of the meeting, public, as part of public record, with the changes.
Yep, a hundred percent, yeah.
Within, within so many hours.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll post this for anyone to, to review, um, subject to the changes that were discussed about the part in parentheses, and of course, there is reference to uh, GCSD, which is an O S, so that's where we borrowed this policy from, um, and it already includes the language that was put in from our advisors. Um, so, so I think it still stands, right, so it would be a motion to, uh, approve the policy eight four four zero with the amendments to section A, extracurricular participation, to include the text here that we'll post, uh, on the website that we just discussed, subject to those two changes, uh, that were mentioned, so if we have a motion for that, we can do it, huh?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to do that.
We have a motion for me, second for Matt, all in favor, aye, any opposed, motion care, it's very good, thank you guys.
Yeah, and thanks for, um, all the research that, that you did, Chris and Tim, and appreciate all that good work on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great point, I, we would not have been able to make an adjustment to support the community in that way, were it not for our administrators taking on the work to help us figure out what was workable, and also be willing to implement something that keeps the district protected, so, um, thanks you guys, thanks for, I, as well. See you back there. Alright, excellent, that, I think, that's, that was it, that is the end, that's all, folks.
You do something.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, do I have a motion to adjourn? This seems kind of anticlimactic, this is, um, anyone wanna go home, I could get a motion to adjourn, motion Jen, and a second from Amy, all in favor, aye, any opposed? Thank you very much, we are adjourned.